I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a reading and justice for all.
All right, correspondence?
No correspondence this evening.
All right, good news, Brady.
All right, um, let's see what we got. For upcoming events, there's a lot of senior stuff going on, it's that time of year. Exams for seniors start tomorrow, and that'll go for all of this week. This Thursday night is scholarship night. I think next Monday is the Top Ten Lunch. Um, let's see, what else do we have? All three elementary schools were invited, are invited, oh wow, I can't read words today. All three elementary schools invited seniors to a clapout on Tuesday. That night is senior banquet and the Hall of Fame induction, and then Wednesday is Senior Palooza, and graduation is the 12th. This Wednesday, the music department is having their honors concert, and this is in conjunction with the middle school bands, so we have their orchestra, chorus, and band coming, and some of them, some of the groups do pieces with our students. And then, the last thing I have, is for summer musical theater, there's two shows this summer, Little Shop of Horrors and A Year with Frog and Toad. Frog and Toad is grant-funded and cast with performers in grades seven through 10. Three, three free of charge performances in July for young audiences.
Thank you, Brady. Ms. Bean.
For starters, academic awards were held last Thursday evening. There was a great presentation by teachers and students who were very receptive to receiving their awards, it was a good evening. Our environmental science class taught by Dr. Houghton competed as the Goffstown Environmental Club at a statewide environment, um, two weeks ago. We had competing, challenging, we, we had two teams competing. They challenged teams from 20 other schools. One team placed first overall, earning a spot to the championship this summer in July at, in Canada. A team of four students plans to go and compete and represent the state of New Hampshire. And the other team placed third overall, a great showing by both teams. Mr. Vayus' geology students led 30 earth science students on a learning expedition to Mount Monadnock on May 21st. Geology students acted as guides and educators to help the earth science students learn about geological history, historical significance, mineralogy, and mining history of America's most hiked peak, gaining a meaningful experience. We had a good showing of, um, teachers out there to help Mr. Webb, Mrs. Proctor, Mrs. Vanderpool, and Mr. McDermott all shop around the event. This week, the Science National Honor Society student, student leadership team connected with Josh Lewis, the curriculum coordinator at Mountain View Middle School, to begin shaping up a potential science tutoring partnership for the 25, 26th school year. They had a great conversation, and they're really hoping for that to take off. Last week, over 200 biology students traveled to the seacoast to participate in the annual marine science field trip, where they had the opportunity to engage in activities led by over 60 AP and Running Start science students. They went to Rye Harbor State Park and aboard a research vessel that took them out to the Isle of Shores, which acted as the floating laboratory. Students explored rocky short tide pools, analyzed water samples, uncovered the physics behind the waves, got up close with ocean's smallest inhabitants, and then, now they're back looking at their online research and comparing that to what they saw, and trying to make connections between that online research and their field trip observations. Peer outreach scooped over 75 ice cream sundaes last week to celebrate a strong end of the year and into finals. Peer outreach has been selected by the state of New Hampshire to receive a $2,000 stipend to implement a team of students and adults to answer the question, getting to why, where they're going to look at the youth risk behavior survey data and choose a few trends, either in a positive or concerning direction, in order to help students as a whole be aware of these trends, making an effort to either continue towards the healthy changes, or to help change and change some of the downward trends. And lastly, peer outreach is still trying to get out the word that they're looking for at least six GHS students to sign up to participate in the New Hampshire Teen Institute Summer Leadership Program. That's a camp that's going to be held over six days towards the end of June, and will be free for those six students thanks to a grant, that grant and scholarship that was awarded to Goffstown through the youth risk behavior survey data. So please spread the word, and that's the news from Goffstown High School.
Thank you, Ms. Bean. Mr. Davis.
All right, uh, the eighth grade promotion ceremony will be taking place at St. Anselms College on Wednesday, June 11th at 2:00 PM, and the eighth grade recognition dance will be taking place at Mountain View on Friday the 13th from 6:00 to 8:00. The, um, fifth grade students have the opportunity to participate in a drumming week with Mr. Theo from the Akwaba Ensemble. After having a lot of the performances, the students got to participate in some drumming activities with the performers. The Akwaba Ensemble originated in Ghana, and it brings students into their culture through drumming music. And thank you to Mr. Kenyon for all of his hard work and commitment during this programming. For those that didn't know, each year the fifth grade gets the opportunity to work with an artist in residence, and this year it was Mr. Theo and his ensemble. Sixth grade students have been working on their research skills in the library to learn about elephants. They've been using their research to create picture books on Canva that they're going to be sharing with the fifth grade language arts classes this year. And Mrs. Baker's sixth grade class actually used their research, and they researched this elephant reserve called the Sheldon Wildlife Trust, and the students wrote persuasive essays about which elephant they would like to adopt. They actually raised the money and adopted Natibu, which is an orphaned male elephant from Kenya. So they had a lot of fun, kind of researching them, learning about them, and then writing their essays to which elephant they thought would be the best to adopt. They chose their, their favorite persuasive essay, and then went about raising the money to actually adopt the elephant. So that was a great experience. Ms. Laws' eighth grade language arts class has been invested in the eighth grade poeties in connection to the reading of the outsiders. And for those that don't know what the poeties are, the students bring in shirts and they write poems on the shirts, and then the students will wear them with the poetry all over them. Ms. Laws also reports that the students have had a lot of really amazing self-guided discussions on the book about the plot, the characters, the meaning behind them. She said that it was very, it was super cool to see the independent critical thinkers that these students have become. The seventh grade has completed their community meetings for this month focusing on the theme of self-control. During this month's meeting, the students attempted to complete a task while we, the teachers, got the opportunity to walk around making all kinds of noise, causing all kinds of chaos, and at the end, the students got to reflect back on what it was like to try and work in that kind of environment, and reflect on times where they've seen these types of situations happen in the classroom, and how difficult it is to be a student or a teacher in those types of situations. The summer reading program is kicking off at Mountain View. Students who choose to participate can earn all kinds of prizes from reading a variety of different books and then completing some choice activities on those stories. They bring those back, and they can fill in a, basically like a tic-tac-toe board for prizes. Seventh grade will be going to their Camp Lincoln Field Trip this week. It's a highly anticipated trip where the students have the opportunity to go kayaking, swimming, shoot bows and arrows, and compete in challenges on their adventure course. June 6th, the sixth grade class will be traveling to the Canterbury Lake Park for their end-of-the-year trip, where they'll also have the opportunity to evaluate the roller coasters at the park. The students will be working on a project of designing their own marble roller coasters when they get back to the classroom. Congratulations to all the sixth grade students who completed the DARE program this, this year, and a big thank you to Mr. Garrity and the Goffstown Police Department for making this program happen. And, let's see, June 16th is Step Up Day, where the students will have the opportunity at MVMS to meet their teachers for next year. June 17th is Field Day, and June 20th is our last day of school. I brought this up to the board before, Ms. Nault's eighth grade class, they had 28 students, I believe, that sent out their works to be published, and the book finally came in. So I want to pass it around for people who want to take a look at it. If you look in the, oops, in the front of the book, you'll see the students' names and what pages their works are on. When we're done, this book will actually be housed in the library at MVMS.
That's wonderful.
So that everybody can see it. And that's it for MVMS.
Great, thank you, Mr. Davis. Go ahead, Wendy.
Great, thank you. So last week at Bartlett, they wrapped up their all-school Book Buddy Read Aloud of the Year. This heartwarming tradition brings our older and our younger students together in the joy of reading. Looking ahead, over at Bartlett, they have some really exciting events. As Brady mentioned, the senior clapout is on June 10th, and that will be at Bartlett, Bartlett, Maple Avenue, and at New Boston Central School. Also on June 13th, over at Bartlett, they'll have their Bartlett Community Field Day, a day filled with games, laughter, and school spirit, and it actually will be held at St. Anselms College this year, so they're very excited about that. Just a reminder for parents to check out their weekly newsletter for more upcoming events that are happening over at Bartlett. Over at Maple, it was a very busy month of May. They did their fourth grade field trip to Strawberry Bank. The third graders went to the Seacoast Science Center, and then I had mentioned to you previously, they did their YMCA Water Safety Course, and that was both the students at Bartlett and at Maple. PFT had their Boys Night Out at the Fisher Cats, and the Maple Administration hosted a volunteer appreciation breakfast. Also, all of our buildings had Memorial Day assemblies and other things that happened at the end of May as well. Over at Glen Lake, they just want to remind parents, they had their year-end celebration for kindergarten students, and that will be held on June 18th. Last week, they held Woody's Walk and Wellness Day, that was a lot to say, with the help of some dedicated volunteers. The kindergarten students walked their jog laps around the playfield, they earned stickers on their walk. They also earned things for drinking water, enjoying a healthy snack like yogurt or fruit, and participating in the dance and stretching stations. After the event, the preschool students helped count stickers on their medals, and the kindergarten, kindergarten students did that as well. The three-year-olds enjoyed a skills course and other activities in the back of the building. The course was developed and drawn in chalk by Ms. Enrique, who is a paraprofessional over at Glen Lake. Students hopped from bubble to bubble in numerical order, danced on a giant sun, found and jumped on letters in their name on a colorful grid, and many other really exciting activities. The kindergarten teachers also hosted Parents for Incoming Parent Info Night last month, and last week, they held their first-ever kindergarten orientation visits to meet, for students to meet and introduce them to Glen Lake and learn more about the school. This involved a collaboration of teaching and related service staff to make this possible, and this will give us an opportunity to better prepare our students for the fall, so we're pretty excited about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Wendy. Anyone else, commendations, good news? Uh, go ahead, Jenny, and then Brady.
I went to the Maple Avenue Memorial Day Celebration, Memorial, whatever you want to call it, and it was really cute. The kids did a good job. I went to the morning session, which was first and second grade, and the kids sang their songs and were so happy and good, and it was a very nice little celebration. And I heard taps sung, which I thought, oh, taps has words? But then I remembered after when it started, when they started playing it, I'm like, oh yeah, da-da-da-da-da. But it was, they did a really nice job. It was a very nice presentation from the kids.
Thank you, Jenny. Go ahead, Meta.
Yeah, I just want to, I think this is the last meeting for the teacher reps. And I just wanted to say thank you to all of the reps and Wendy for bringing in the elementary school. It's really been quite amazing to find, you know, learn about what's happening at the school, so I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
I think it's very informative.
It is, thank you. Anyone else?
I would just take the opportunity to say, we have one more seat available for an elementary teacher on the Goffstown School Board, so if there's a teacher from Bartlett, Maple Ave., or Glen Lake that would like to join your colleagues, we would welcome you.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, so, public comment. Is there a public comment tonight? No? All right, closed public comment. We just need to approve the May 12th, 2025 meeting minutes before we move on to our presentations. Does everybody have a chance to read the minutes? Anybody see anything? I don't need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the May 12th, 2025 minutes as presented.
Thank you, Jane. Jack seconds. Any further discussion? CNN, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Teachers, students? Yes, opposed, abstaining? We're unanimous. All right, so...
Can we actually change the order?
Yeah.
Why don't we have the high school presentation first? I'm sure Mr. Borget doesn't mind yielding his time.
He's going to be here for a while.
So, we're going to invite Dr. Houghton up to the mic, and he's got students here that he's going to introduce. So, we have a request. So, this is a pretty unique, come on up. This is a pretty unique, so this is Dr. Larry Houghton, high school science teacher, and why don't I let Dr. Houghton talk about it?
Hello.
What do we, what do we got? We've got some exciting news for these great students.
Absolutely. So, every year, well, I've been doing this for 17 years, and this, we've won the Envirothon, this is a competition that these guys won. They came in first and third place, which is pretty exciting. And, actually, your son participated a few years ago, and I saw him the other day, and he had a little chain still from the Envirothon on his, his keychain, so that was kind of cool. But, anyway, we, we compete every year, and we have won twice, but have never had the opportunity to travel to the international competition. And this year, it happens to be somewhere pretty special, so, we are hoping that, well, I'm going to let them tell you. We're hoping that we get to go. So, I'm going to let these guys talk to you about that, if that's okay.
So you want to bring them up and introduce them?
Yeah. Come on up.
Welcome, guys. You just have to talk into one of the mics, otherwise people at home can't hear you.
Grab a few chairs.
Welcome, Lisa Jones, if you have to see him.
There you go. All right, I'm going to, they said they'd like to introduce themselves.
Yeah?
My, my name's Mark Jassy.
My name's Farin Sweet.
My name is Maddie Rossi.
My name is Lady Garretson.
Hello, welcome, guys.
All right, so, in our class, two teams competed in the Envirothon. That's the, the New Hampshire Envirothon, rather, and that has many teams throughout the state, and one of our teams placed first, and one was third. This placing first gives the students of our class the opportunity to form a group of five and travel to Calgary, Alberta, to represent this school in the national competition.
The New Hampshire Envirothon is willing to fund us, our registration room and board in Canada, however, we have to provide our own funds to travel to and from. So, we would like to request both the ability to travel to Canada and the ability to raise around $6,000 to cover the travel expenses of all five students going, as well as two chaperones.
So, again, yeah, we just come here tonight to first ask you guys for the permission to travel to Alberta, Canada in the first place, as well as permission to fundraise for that trip through a GoFundMe, so that we can represent Gofftown and represent the state of New Hampshire at this international competition. As well as, if, if the GoFundMe doesn't work out as an idea, we're open to looking for other suggestions, and we'd like to thank you guys very much for your time and consideration today.
All right.
So why don't, let me jump in.
Yeah.
First of all, congratulations.
Yeah.
We're really proud of you guys, that's terrific. So, a couple things for the board's consideration this evening. The first is, this is an out-of-state field trip, so you need, we would need approval for this. This happens to also be out of the country, so, all the more reason that this would be board approval, and it's overnight, so you have to approve on both of those fronts. The crowd, crowdfunding is a problem, so that is not something that is permissible under board policy. So, I think it's great that the organization is going to cover the cost for your room and board, as well as the conference, you know, the registration fees, but doing a crowdfunding for the cost of the air travel is going to be a problem.
Okay, I, the only thing that I did here was that they were able to do something, that you were possibly able to grant permission, that they did something like that for the night locks?
Oh, that was really different. That was actually raised as a warrant article.
Okay.
Yeah, so that, that wouldn't be an option here. So, and I apologize, I was looking to see, do we have the crowdfunding policy? Okay, so, this is policy, thank you. So this is policy BDB, and is, crowdfunding is strictly prohibited. So, as much as I support this effort, their method of raising funds is in violation of your policy. So I would, I would say to them, unfortunately, I think you have a unique challenge, that you're going to need to find a different way to raise the money. You can still raise the money, but you can't do it through crowdfunding.
Okay.
So if there are other ways of how to do that, we can try to be creative to work with you, provided the board approves the field trip request, but it can't be a GoFundMe.
Okay.
Sorry.
Go ahead, Meta.
I just wanted to say that, first, about the actual, you know, the award that you won, both of my daughters participated in this program. They also won, like, all sorts of awards, and it's like, where's this coming from? I, I think it's wonderful.
Great teachers.
Great teachers, yes, and that kids are actually interested. They were so excited about the class. They still talk about it. One of my daughters is considering maybe another degree in environmental science. It's, I, I think it's really pretty amazing. And then, the, the other part of it is a question, how much money do you need to fundraise?
I said 6,000.
Yep, so, the idea, what we've been looking at is the plane tickets are approximately $750 right now, round trip, and then there's a, a little bit of shuttling at the end, where there's either a taxi or a shuttle to go to the, from the airport to the Mount Royal University. And, so it comes out to about $6,000 total, but, you know, hopefully, we're going to raise as much of that as we can, and then students and myself and the other chaperone would pay whatever's remaining.
Thank you. Anyone else?
So I would certainly support the trip, and, you know, greatly appreciative of Dr. Houghton's time, and, you know, the other volunteers that are willing to go do this. And I think that there is another way that you could raise the money. If you could find, you know, a host organization, they can do it crowdfunding, and then they can do a donation to the school district, there might be another way to skin the cat.
That's a great idea.
Which is not very environmentally friendly, I don't know if you've known any cat skinning.
That's my other class.
That is your other class. But, as long as we can work around the inability to crowdfund, I, I think that, you know, certainly if the board is in support of the field trip request, we'd be happy to help you as best we can.
That's great, thank you.
All right, so does any board member have questions, or, go ahead, Jenny.
I think it's awesome for kids to, to travel, and it's certainly to go and participate after having won a contest like this. So I would make a motion for, to allow them to go on their trip overnight, out of state, out of country, and have a great time. And, we're proud of you, awesome job.
Yeah, thank you, Jenny. Do you have a second? By Laura, any further discussion? All right, CNN, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Teachers, students? Opposed?
Abstaining? We're unanimous, good luck, congratulations.
Thank you, guys, thanks so much.
Let us know how things go.
Appreciate you coming.
We'll keep in touch.
Yes, definitely.
Sounds good.
Sounds like you have some good ideas, so.
Thanks, Larry.
All right, so, do you want to go to Stephen or Wendy?
Uh, we can go to Mr. Borget.
All right.
Okay, so, this is Stephen Borget, our IT Director Extraordinaire, and every year, once a year, Mr. Borget is required by, by policy and by state statute to come and provide an update on the data governance plans and any changes. So, with that introduction, Mr. Borget, the floor is yours.
I need one moment to get it up on the projection screen, so the folks at home can see. It is assuming that it will connect.
Do you need me to put in a help desk ticket for you?
You can.
Oh, there, he's got it.
Here we go. Okay, so, by statute, we have to review the data governance plan annually, before June 30th of each year. So, we've got, this year's, there are not that many changes to our data governance policy. I'll walk you through them. Most of the changes are related to one of the policies that you have in final read and review tonight. So, I'm making the changes based on the assumption that the policy will be adopted, and that's the records retention policy, EHBR. So, as I said, most of the changes, and I have them up on the slides, and I'll just kind of talk to them, are related specifically around data destruction and data retention, which are specifically what EHBR speaks to. With, so, a few pieces that are adding in, and one is a piece of language talking about data being destroyed in a reasonable amount of time, once the, once the record retention schedule expires on that piece of data. And the other one, the other major piece in that section talks about the exceptions, exclusions in the data destruction policy. The items in, the three lines, sections in red are the changes to the document, which, again, reflect the changes that were added in to the data retention schedule in, in regulation or policy EHBR, which is student electronic work, which is retained for one year beyond the student's projected year of graduation or attendance in the district. So that's pretty much the student's Office 365 files, their Google Docs, their School O.G. stuff. So, we typically retain, we will retain, I'm not going to say we provide access, but we will retain that data on the system for, for one year beyond their departure from Gofftown High School. The next section talks about employee electronic data, so that is their email, their Google, their office, same thing, maintained for one year beyond their final workday, unless directed by HR to provide continued access to those files or to have the files transferred to another individual. That could be things like time sheets, payroll, grade information, things that are stored as a staff member to be transferred over, otherwise the destruction policy would be a year afterwards, same, which is also defined in that EHBR regulation. And the last piece talks about employee email, which the retention, which is to retain items in people's mailboxes for up to five years from the date the center received, and leaving the responsibility on the individual staff member for identifying, tagging, and archiving items in their mailbox that need to be retained beyond five years. So to set the default to five years, as opposed to right now, which the default is set to forever. And all of these items, again, are in the EHBR policy that you have been reviewing over the last month. So that is the bulk of the changes in data governance. There were a few other small updates, fixing web links in the document to reflect policies that were updated on the website and have been adopted throughout the year, and some minor corrections in one of the appendices on data roles and permissions to reflect changes that have been made, specifically School O.G. and Power School roles, which are defined in, in data governance. That is effectively all the changes in data governance. So as I said, the bulk of it just reflects policy changes. The last slide I want to touch on in here is just an update with vetting, because that all ties into our data governance policy, which is the requirement that the state has put on us to make sure all digital platforms meet a set of minimum data privacy standards. Every digital resource that collects personally identifiable information needs to meet a baseline set of standards. Those standards are designed to ensure that the data is protected. We go through and we, we work with a company to vet these resources. Our vetting process is typically good for three years unless notified otherwise, and we have had a few of the years where we've been notified otherwise. And we have had a few of the years where we've been notified otherwise. Currently, we have 187 signed data privacy agreements with digital vendors. That could be everything from Power School and Schoolagi to any of the online tools that we use. The Savvy Science Curriculum, Mystery Science, the math curriculums, and Wonders, and Reveal Math?
Math and You.
Math and You. Big ideas, math. All of those products, we have the privacy agreements in place. We have 28 vendors who have not signed privacy agreements, resulting in the products not being available for use in district. We have 29 additional products that the vendors have identified that they don't collect anything, identified as personal identifiable information as defined by state statute. We have one agreement that is currently set to expire the next three months, and we have nine that have expired that we are still negotiating. Well, when I say we, it's the firm we work with is negotiating to get them renewed. So that's kind of the state with the, with the digital assets, the digital tools.
Go ahead, Jared.
Thank you. Great presentation. Thank you for calling out the changes. Two questions. You list on one of your slides, the data managers, we're regular review systems.
Yep.
Who is that?
Data manager by definition in the data governance plan is the individual responsible for maintaining that system and that system's data. So that will vary depending on the digital platform.
So it's not one individual?
No, it's the platform administrator. So are my data manager for Power School is my SAS administrator, but my data manager for, let's say, parchment, which does our transcript, is, is someone else in the high school guidance department.
My second question is, trying to recall, individuals don't have administrative rights to download applications onto their school machines, correct?
With the new devices going out, they will be correct.
Okay. So the current in-place devices?
Have limited rights on limited applications, applications that would be installed in their user profile. Whereas the new devices that are being deployed, we now have BitLocker working and AppLocker working correctly to address that audit item.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jared. Anyone else? Questions? All right. Thank you, Stephen.
So that was the data governance piece. The second part that we listed on the agenda is an IT request which will be heard in non-public this evening as it pertains to cybersecurity. So there is an additional piece, but we'll discuss that further with Mr. Borget in non-public session this evening.
All right, Stephen.
Thank you.
All right, Wendy. Great, thank you.
This is Scoler.
Great. So I'm here this evening to talk about the, thank you, Who We Play For program. This was actually presented to CNE a few months ago, but CNE had asked us to do a little bit of homework on data privacy, which we were able to do to bring that to the board this evening. So what this organization is, is it's a nonprofit based out of Florida with a mission to eliminate preventable sudden cardiac death in, in the young through affordable heart screenings. And this organization has teamed up with Wentworth Douglas Hospital here in New Hampshire to be able to do EKG screenings to any student or family that is interested in having their child get an EKG. Obviously, we would be targeting our athletes, but our performers and any other students that might be at risk or their families would feel the need to, I want to make sure that my child is okay. These EKGs pick things up that you would not normally pick up in a physical. So this does not take the place of a physical or a sports physical. This is just an added layer of protection for families. When they get the EKGs, first of all, we would have privacy here at the high school. Our males and females would be separate for the EKG procedures. Right, procedures means it's non-invasive for the EKGs. It's at a low cost of $20 for the EKG, and there are scholarships available for families that can't afford to have them. All of the EKGs that would be done would be sent to a pediatric cardiologist to look at the EKGs, to see if there were any flags. And what happens is when a student is screened, they're put into three categories. Green means good, yellow means I think we need to take a second look, and red means like, uh-oh, we need to look at something here because something abnormal has come up. They have been doing this program here in New Hampshire. Emily Knight from Wentworth Douglas has been doing this since November in 2024. She's visited at least nine schools and screened well over 300 students. There, some examples of school districts, Oyster River, I know Bo just did them as well. And since they've started, they have been able to screen eight students who were flagged in the yellow zone and two in the red zone from just those screenings alone. All of this information would be secured. Stephen checked in with Rama, who we talked about earlier, with the firm that we work for, for DPAs. We would not be getting this medical information directly. For families that would opt in to have the EKG done, this information would be sent to those families. We would only get information if a parent or a family chose to share it with us. So this would be an opt-in that we would like to offer for our high school families to be able to run in late, late summer, early fall, with the thought of doing it after school hours. So obviously, if it's in August, we would not have school in session anyways. But in the evening, or a Saturday, or a Sunday, if we needed to in the fall. And again, trying to look before our fall, some of our fall athletes, our fall performers, they start, to give this option to families. So again, this is an opt-in, low-cost EKG screening to look for potential for sudden cardiac arrest. So we're looking for approval for the board to be able to bring this program in.
Thank you, Wendy. Does anybody from CNE want to talk? Go ahead, Jenny.
An important part of this also is, this screening is not normally done in, in kids.
For physicals.
For physicals. It would normally only come up if they perceived a problem, like a real problem. And most of these problems are not problems that, you know, stare you in the face. They come up after, after exertion. So EKG wouldn't be done until you're an adult and you're having issues. So this is something that would be done for kids as a screening process to pick something up that wouldn't be caught so that our kids are not having issues running around and exerting themselves.
Jenny, if I could mention just a statistic here, sudden cardiac death is the number one cause of death in student athletes. And 80% never experience any symptoms before that event occurs.
Wow, thank you, Wendy. Thank you, Jenny. Anyone else from CNE want to talk?
I think it's just important to note that not only is it low cost, but those who would be eligible, it looks like those costs are weak.
Yes.
So it should not hold.
Through scholarships.
Yes.
Yeah, it should not hold anybody back, and that is something that is of concern.
And though obviously we, our personnel would not be doing the EKGs, we will have school administrators, Sharice Lelter, who is the school nurse here at Goffstown High School, really spearheaded to bring this here. She would be here, some of our coaches, so we would be staffed here to make sure that if, you know, if our kids have questions, just for support for kids coming in, again, we just want to offer this to families as, you know, as an opt-in.
So Wendy, it's only geared towards high school. Is it because middle school's too young?
No, so our thought was to offer it to high school first, and for some reason, we didn't fill up the slots. We could go to middle school, but I'm going to tell you that I, I think we'll fill it up with high school first. Our thought is, is that we'll see how this goes, and I can bring some information back to the board to see if we want to run another event. That's our thought.
Okay. And there's no limit of how many kids want to sign up?
We would just need to work through the details and logistics with them because they have to have the volunteers to be able to come in here that are trained for EKGs through the hospital. So we would just have to work with them to see what our timestamp would be. Is it possible that we could have two different sessions? It's possible. We have to work around their schedule because I know a number of high schools are jumping onto this.
Okay, thank you. All right, anybody else have questions, comments? Anybody want to do a motion?
I'll do a motion that we accept the sudden cardiac arrest program, Who Do We Play For, and start the program here at the high school, open it up later on if, if necessary.
Great, thank you, Jenny. Do I have a second? By Jack? All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Teachers, students, opposed, abstaining. We're unanimous. Thank you, yeah, definitely keep us updated on that. And thank you guys for doing that.
Let's plan to give an idea of how many screenings we do. I think it would be, I'd, I'd like to share that if we can, great.
For sure.
All right, so moving on to committee reports. So A and F, we have our manifest first, Caroline?
Sure. So I will motion to approve the manifest in an amount of $3,780,016.40.
Thank you. Do I have a second? By Jack? All right, go ahead.
So a breakdown of the manifest includes payroll, taxes, and benefits to total $3,109,894.21. And then special ed activity is quite lengthy. But a couple of the large payouts went to Durham School Service for in-district and out-of-district transportation with a total of $85,839. We paid White House School for out-of-district services, $45,373. And then we paid Seven Hills Out-of-District Services for $51,770.70. And the total for special ed activity is $266,904.65. We then had general expenses. We paid Amazon for books, equipment, and supplies, $45,000. We paid Consolidated Communications, $6,699 for telephone services. BMO Harris Bank, $6,144 for facilities, IT, and food service expenses. And then we paid Aqua Waba Traditional, $6,642 for MVMS Artist in Residence Program. We paid Jacobs Ladder to install the night locks, $6,640. The Manchester School District, we cost share transportation, $6,448. Our propane went down. It was above $11,673 paid to Dead River. And then our electricity to Eversource was $42,758. Our regular education transportation to Goffstown Truck Center was a total of $141,785. GovConnection for IT equipment, $21,842. Home Depot Pro for facility supplies and equipment, $11,630. And finally, Town of Goffstown for sewer and police detail, $24,745. So the total in that category for general expenses was $332,1973. Lastly, in our food service category, for food and commodities, we paid $28,562 to Performance Food Services.
Great, thank you. Anybody have any questions, comments? All right, seeing none, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Teachers, students, yes, opposed, abstaining. We're unanimous. All right, so moving on. Go ahead, Doug, you're up.
All right, so just like the manifest, you also have revenue and expenditure reports in your packet. Those are also online for anybody in the town to see. So if people wanted to, they could go to the website and go to SAU Information, scroll down to either the manifest or to the expense and revenue reports. And those reports, expense and revenues, are organized by year, and then within the year by period. So period one being July, the start of the fiscal year, and period 12, which isn't in there yet, would be June, the end of our fiscal year. So those are going to be, those are always found online going back to the start of this year. Next thing we have is, you know, if people looked at those expenses and revenue reports, they would see that we are underspent in our expenses, and we are going to collect more than the expectation in revenue that we budgeted for. So we are going to end with a projected fund balance, which will get kind of refined as we go throughout the year, and then will be finalized when the auditors come in August. So we presented a projected fund balance at the last meeting, and this meeting, it has gone up by about $99,000. That has to do with kind of a combination of some higher expenses as well as some higher revenues netted to that $99,000. The revenues were instead of having the projection for the third tuition bill for New Boston, we have the actual, and that came in higher than projected. And some of the expenses were some IT purchases, as well as all the purchases that, that are happening at the end of the year. So as we looked at the last projection, as we look at this projection, the only thing that you're really seeing that are changing on this sheet is the revenues and the expenditures. And then as you come down the sheet, you'll see that now we are expecting to have an unassigned fund balance of $556,000. So, and that is with leaving 1.3 million in the contingency fund, which we'll talk about in a second, as well as matching up with that estimated amount of offsetting taxes by 1.7 million. So as we look at that too, if we go to that 1.3 million, which is currently what the board has voted to be in the contingency fund. We are night one of two of kind of two decisions as far as the contingency fund for fiscal year '26. So tonight will be board suggestion, which we will bring to the auditors as far as the amount that we expect to put in the contingency. After we get audited in August, we'll come back with where the fund balance is using that number. And if the fund balance is, is higher or lower, the board can always, no matter what happens with the fund balance, the board then will make a final vote on what will be the contingency amount for fiscal year '26. So tonight would be a vote, knowing that the final vote will come in August once we have a little bit more information and once all the numbers are looked at by the auditors. So I don't know if we have any questions on the revenue, expense, fund balance, or contingency?
Anybody? And if not, we can do the motion, Scott typed up motions for us. It'll be number two for the contingency. Go ahead, Jared.
So, thank you for kind of putting all the numbers out and underlining some of the things. This remaining number that you have of the $556,000 rounded out to 557, what happens to that? Would that be kept on the books until it's given back to the taxpayers at the end of the fiscal year as we cannot hold a fund balance?
Exactly, yep. So if nothing further happens with that, and that's, that's a projection. But once the auditors come, we're going to have a finalized unassigned fund balance. And at that point, whatever the school board does not put towards contingency will go to offset taxes. So that's the only other option we have at that point is to offset taxes.
And from these numbers that you've listed out, I'm sorry, may I follow?
Yeah, go for it.
Thank you. From the numbers that we listed, we're looking at a contingency right now of the same amount we put in last year of 1.3 million dollars.
As a placeholder.
As a placeholder.
That's what we're recommending.
Which can go up and down, and as you listed here, the max that we could put into this contingency is a little above 1.7 million dollars.
Yeah, and if we came to August with an unassigned fund balance, after taking out that 1.3 million of $556,000, we would recommend putting a little bit more into the contingency fund going into next year. But we're waiting on that recommendation until after.
After the audit.
After the audit.
Third, final, final follow-up.
Yeah, no, go ahead, Jared.
The estimated amount to offset taxes that we have listed of 1.7 from our current fund balance, when would that actually be released to the town?
So that would be part of the tax rate setting, which happens in the fall. So whatever we have to raise for, for taxes, we now have to raise 1.7 less. So the money never goes back to the taxpayers and then comes back. It, what it does is, instead of raising, you know, 1.7 more, everyone gets spread across.
Correct. That's why I said, when is it released back to the town, not the taxpayers? So when does that kind of clear our books and goes on to the town books? What date does that happen? Do we know?
So part of the tax rate setting then is what the town provides for us for, for the year from, from raising of the taxes. And that is set into a monthly payment. So what happens is, is the money doesn't necessarily go to the town. So what happens is the money doesn't necessarily go to the town, but the town is giving us, in this case, $1.7 million less. So the money doesn't go back to the town, but over the next 12 months, they would give us $1.7 million less.
So that's June 30th, which is at the end of our fiscal year, roughly?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks Jared. Anyone else? Questions, comments?
So it's good forecast. I mean, we like being in a position that we are meeting our targets that we set through the budget development cycle. And the fact that we have, you know, after we put aside money for the contingency fund, we still have $500,000 to $700,000 left, great. Great.
So does anybody wanna make the motion for the contingency fund?
I'll make the motion to authorize the business administrator to fund the 5% contingency fund in accordance with NHRS A198:4B with funds from the unassigned fund balance from the FY '25 school year in the amount of $1,300,000.
Thank you Shane. Do I have a second?
One second.
By Jack? All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Teacher, students? Yes, opposed, abstaining. We're unanimous. All right, thank you. All right, Doug?
So the next thing is in regards to the high school softball field scoreboard. So, and possible use of the capital reserve fund for that. So in your packet, you'll have, you'll see two memos. One from 2021 and one from just now, 2025. So going back to 2021, the reason why Scott included that in here is that this was part of the background as the decision was to purchase the new field scoreboard that's now at the turf field. So back then, it was mentioned that the softball field scoreboard was not doing well. It was over 20 years old. And that they had just repaired it with somebody who was hoping to kind of limp it along a little bit longer. At that point, it was thought maybe one to three years. So we're now four years past that and the scoreboard is no longer working. There is a playoff game at home that they're hoping that, without really spending too much money, that they can get it to work. But as of right now, it is not working. So we now have a scoreboard which is 25-plus years old where the replacement parts are not easy to find and are becoming more costly. And it's definitely, seems like it might be timely to purchase a new one. So just like the other field scoreboard was purchased through a CRF, that's our recommendation as well for this one. So with this one, you can see that there are multiple pictures. So there is a picture of a scoreboard which has the ball strikes and outs, so similar to a baseball or softball. And then our current one at the field, which you can see at the top of it has a Goffstown High School. So you almost want to picture them kind of together. So instead of one that talks about football markers type of thing, you're gonna have one that talks about softball markers with on top of it being personalized for Goffstown. So the thought is, is that the scoreboard would be under $20,000. When we purchased the last one, it was $26,000, but it was much larger. This one is smaller. We have two, working with two vendors to get quotes. They believe, or at least one of them believes that it will be under $20,000. We did receive a quote back today, late in the afternoon, that was under $20,000. Not by a lot, but under $20,000. So you'll see there, if the board wants, there's a suggestion motion to use about, well, up to $20,000 of the CRF. And as we look at the capital reserve fund, right now we have around $426,000 in it. Once we place in our $300,000 and then we take out our placeholders, that have already been approved for the phone system, the core switches, and the cistern project, that brings us to $258,000. And then if we deduct from that, two of those yearly things to replace the turf. So we're kind of adding up to the turf replacement when it needs to happen. So each year, we're putting, we're kind of earmarking $50,000 for that. So if we start with the $258,000, we take away two of those, being $100,000 combined, we're expecting to be around $158,000 for the CRF once our known work is done. So this would be kind of thinking, does a board want to take out $20,000 from that known amount of $158,000 for replacement of a scoreboard that is no longer working?
All right, any questions, comments? Go ahead Jenny. I would say yes. Is there any way that the scoreboard or new one can be put up for the playoff game? I mean, I think it's just embarrassing at a high school level on a playoff game, not to have it working. That's just embarrassing. At D1 level?
I wish I could say yes, but the answer would be no. So it's about three to five months between when you order one and when it comes and it gets installed. Yeah, especially when you get your personalized with a name on it as well, so.
And I would agree Jenny, it is embarrassing. But this is also a good reflection of how we do things. So, you know, we're not gonna replace the transmission until it falls. So this is an example that we drove the old car as long as we could. And, you know, could we have replaced the scoreboard before it died? We could've. We could've. That's not something that we generally do with this type of equipment. But we got our money's worth out of it and it was probably a donation back in the day.
Yeah, it was. Because there were a lot of frigates back in the day. My husband brought them here.
Yep.
I freely brought them here and looked for places. This is beginning to disturb me now though. We have the girls softball who don't have a scoreboard that works and they have a playoff game. We have tennis playoffs happening right now.
They won?
And, did they win?
That's what Julie let me know, yeah.
Awesome.
Semi-finals or a...
And we have crappy tennis courts that have not been approved to be fixed. We don't have a baseball field. We're a D1 school.
We don't have a cross-country track.
And we have no... Yeah, we have no... Honestly, some of these things have to be looked at and taken care of. I know we're an athletic, I mean, we're an educational department, but all of this kind of stuff comes into education too. Teamwork, getting along with other people, figuring out a plan, trying to do your best, trying to instill the best in the person next to you. All of this stuff is important, academic stuff as well. And our facilities have fallen apart, pretty much.
Got a great field though, don't we?
We do. It's awesome. But we really have to look into some of the other ones.
This is when I need to sit here as your superintendent to have an honest conversation. You don't have the lowest K to 12 cost without, you know, not spending money in a lot of areas. And facilities, equipment, athletic equipment, those are all needs here. All needs. And we have to always prioritize and identify, you know, where the priorities are. And we tend to drive the old car until the transmission falls. And here's one that fell.
So if there's no other questions or comments, does anybody wanna read the motion? So we can get it going and get it replaced? I will. I move to authorize the business administrator, facilities director, to replace the GHS softball field scoreboard using up to $20,000 in funding from the district's capital reserve fund. Thank you Jenny. Do I have a second? Go ahead. Oh, sorry, Caroline, so Jack first. All right, any further discussion?
I do just wanna add that, as much as there are needs and there will always be needs, we've had a lot of wonderful community members who have donated. Lots of stuff, you know, that have contributed to the field. Even just this year with the JV softball field and what they did to sort of revamp that and resurface. I don't know all the terminology of it. But to make that better for not only our high school players, but then the Goffstown Youth Softball League that also uses that too. So just so I think, you know, highlight some of the wonderful individuals that donate a lot of time and equipment and money and expertise, so.
That's true. Thank you Caroline. Absolutely. And where would you be without them? Right. Go ahead Jack.
Another perfect argument for the branding side of it, right? Goffstown Softball by Sousa Signs.
Yeah, there you go. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second.
I'd also like to see, can we do the one with the platform and the kids just stand up there and look at the letters? That used to be a common job.
In fact, that's exactly what I want to have happen for this playoff year.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because, you know, I don't wanna point any fingers, but the scoreboard worked just fine until Mr. Grzone was one of the coaches. Now all of a sudden, we've got a, you know, a sign that doesn't work and I don't know. But I think we get somebody up there with the numbers, you know, putting them, yeah.
Jack's volunteering.
Sounds like you get me the old milk crate.
Yeah, right? All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, teachers, students? Yes, opposed, abstaining. We're unanimous. Thank you. All right, so the next, Doug, go ahead, is our school board meeting dates.
Yeah, so draft date calendar for next year. So after a short summer break, kind of coming back on. This one has August 25th. The dates really aren't too different from last year. They're just kind of adjusted by, you know, a day type of thing to match up. Not much to note. I think maybe one thing to note is that the March 2nd meeting is, you know, the day that people come back from that February break, that first Monday. But other than that, it's kind of typical, as it's been.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, then the next is summer procurement commodity purchases. Doug?
So the memo that Scott provided on this talks about propane and the rate, the average rate that we're paying this year. So what Scott did in the past was instead of buying like the 200,000 gallons all at once of propane, did buy chunks of it. So that's why it talks of an average rate. So some of what we were paying would have been over $1.72, you know, for some of our propane. And that after that amount was used up, then maybe we went to a little bit less than $1.72. So as he's connecting with Dead River, which is our supplier of propane, they are quoting prices that are around $1.44 to $1.50. So definitely lower than it's been in the last year or more. And as we look at the $1.72 average and if we were able to secure a rate of $1.45, then that would be a difference of 27 cents per gallon. And you multiply that by the 200,000 gallons that we typically use, then you would have a yearly savings of $54,000. So what Dead River is able to do, which a lot of places won't do, is that they'll allow you to buy this for multiple years in the future. So they'll allow it to go out three years. So we could have a consistent rate of somewhere, you know, it's a daily rate that you call up and you get that rate that day. But typically, it's been between $1.44 and $1.50. We could get a rate around that area for three years locked in. Which, you know, with a school district, locking in rates at a lower than average amount is always a great thing for budgeting. So you can see that the recommendation has to do with waiving the district's procurement policy and then also looking to secure that same rate for the next three fiscal years. So fiscal year '26, '27, and '28.
Thank you Doug. Any questions, comments? Everybody good with this? If we are, somebody wanna read the motion?
I can read it. I move to waive the sealed bid process in the Goffstown School District Policy DJB procurement and allow the business administrator to negotiate and secure the best available fiscal year '25, '26, fiscal year '26, '27, and fiscal year '27, '28 commodity pricing for propane with the current vendor, Dead River, and other vendors if necessary.
Thank you Caroline. Do I have a second?
One second.
By Jack? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Teacher, students? Opposed, abstaining. We're unanimous. Thank you. And before we go on to the next thing, yeah, we're doing this. So it didn't get added, but as you guys know, the last couple of meetings, Scott and Doug talked to us about the audit questions. So they were emailed to you. Caroline and I are gonna read them. We're just gonna quickly answer them so that we can send them to our auditors. All right, so the first question is, do you have any knowledge or suspicions of fraud affecting your entity? Is anybody? Okay. I'll fill in the answers if you want to go. Go ahead, you can do them. Oh, no, and then there's part B on one. Have you received any communication from employees, former employees, regulators, or other alleged fraud?
No.
Nobody? Good. All right, go ahead.
All right, question two. Have you identified any specific risks of fraud within your entity?
No.
You can shout out the answer.
Feel like I need a buzzer.
I know. Has the board adopted a universal code of ethics for members and employees to follow? The answer is yes, and we do have those policies. And then if yes, does this document prohibit elected officials and employees from doing business with an entity? And that would be no. Are you all in agreement to that?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, so this one's a little confusing. Let's see if I can do this correctly. Have you or any related party of yours had any interest, direct or indirect, in any of the following transactions or pending or incomplete transactions since July 1st of 2023 to which the school district/SAU or any retirement, savings, pension, or other similar plan was or is to be a party to sale, purchase, exchange, or leasing a property?
Maybe no.
No.
Receiving or furnishing of goods, services, or facilities?
No. Everybody's good with no?
No.
Unless somebody knows something. Okay, go ahead.
Transfer or receipt of income or assets?
No.
Nope. Maintenance of bank balances as compensating balances for the benefit of another?
No.
Or any other transactions?
No. All right, and if it was, if any of those were yes, we would need to describe them, which none of them were yes. So moving on, does the board have any concerns over related party transactions? If so, please explain.
No.
No. No.
All right, number six. Does the board formally authorize all disbursements, both vendor and payroll, prior to the release of funds?
Yes. Okay, Jared, Pete?
Zach, can you repeat that one?
Does the board formally authorize all disbursements, both vendor and payroll, prior to the release of funds?
I don't know if that's accurate, because we get the information after the fact, but we empower the officers to do that work.
Yeah, so it's always been yes.
I think there's a follow-up question to confirm that that's the case.
Go ahead Caroline, read if...
Well, so that's if the answer to the above is no, please describe your knowledge of how disbursements are approved within the system, so.
So Doug, do you wanna touch on that question? Because technically, we don't approve it before. I guess in some way we...
You don't approve payroll necessarily all the time before. But it's a known amount type of thing. Vendor payments, you typically do, but you do allow for off-sequence payments. And that would typically be if we're paying somebody like Eversource and if we didn't pay them on time, we would have a penalty.
Right.
So it makes sense to kind of have those out-of-sequence type of payments. So I mean, typically, you're approving the vendors, but not always. That goes with your policy that you've approved.
Right, that we have. All right, so the answer then you feel would be yes?
Well, I guess the answer would be no, but approved through a policy.
Okay. All right. Are we good with that answer? Okay, number seven. Describe how the board stays informed of the latest changes in the laws and regulation pertaining to the entity. So we have school board association meeting. Superintendent and business administration does meetings and then relays stuff back to us. Does anybody have anything different? No? Okay Caroline.
Okay. Number eight. Does the board review comparative reports of estimated in actual revenues and appropriations and expenditures?
Yes.
If yes, how often are reports reviewed?
Every board meeting, at least.
Yep.
All right, we're almost done. What procedures does the board follow in reviewing or using these reports? For example, does the board normally meet with the department heads as part of this process? Also, does the board review both the revenue and expenditure reports? So we have A and F that gets all of that, and then it comes to the full board. Anything else to add?
We just got those reports tonight.
Yeah, we did. Okay.
All right, Stephen, we might need your help for this one. Has the board approved a disaster recovery plan in the event of loss or interruption of the IT functions?
We have parts of the disaster recovery plan that are in data governance. I want to say it's appendix I or J or something like that. And we also have an incident response plan, which was discussed a long time ago, but I don't think it has come back to the board because it is protected under 91A.
Okay. So the answer would be yes?
Yes.
Is there a written investment policy adopted?
Yes.
Yes. And it was, do we know, it was usually reviewed then, when was it the policy last reviewed? We usually do them.
In August.
In August, right? So August of last year.
Okay. Does the board have knowledge of any funds or bank accounts that are not in the custody of the treasurer?
No. Does that include?
It excludes properly established student activity funds held by the school principals.
And PFTs and things like that.
Yeah, that excludes that.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Valuable information.
That's all right, I got your back. All right, number 13, does the school district/SAU have knowledge of any crowdfunding activities? If so, please indicate what they are, on what website they are maintained, and who is responsible for them. And our answer would be no. All right, last question.
Okay, last one, for each board member, please provide below the years of service and brief description of their background.
Yeah, so we have.
That's a new question.
Yeah, we had to fill it out last year, so if you just send them to Scott and Doug, would that be the easiest?
That would be great.
So just do how many years you've been on the board. Nobody's ever put their background, so.
And we don't have records of that?
We have last year, so we can just.
Yeah, so Laura, you would need to definitely do it this year.
But we know.
And that's it.
I guess we'll, yeah, we're good.
Just add a year to each one.
Yeah, we'll add a year to each one.
And then Vanessa needs to send it.
Yep.
How about if you have no idea?
Well, you put 20 last year. All right, so that's it.
Before that, no one can remember.
All right, so Doug, so you just need Laura and Vanessa to get in touch with you.
Yep.
All right, and everyone else, you just add a year. Is that good for you guys then?
Yep.
Okay, and then I will give this copy to you.
That'd be great.
For what we did tonight, okay. All right, thank you, guys. All right, budget committee report.
No meetings.
None until the fall, right?
None scheduled, that I know of.
C and E?
No meeting, our next one is in the fall, excuse me. But we will be talking about standardized report cards later on.
Right, I saw that. All right, P and C, Rheta?
P and C met this evening for our last meeting of the academic year. We went over a number of things regarding just our regular business and our work schedule for next year, along with our work plan. The one thing that we do want to share out is we have talked about many ideas about how to have better communications and better information to share with the community. We're doing the three things. We had talked about in the past having a Facebook page, although we're putting a hold on that. The one thing that we're very interested in doing is maybe a survey with our community, being the parents and people interested in the school, to get a sense of how do they best want to receive that information. So that will be something we'll look at for the upcoming year. But in the meanwhile, one thing that we would like to move forward with, and we've already discussed this as a board, is better information on specific functions of the board. And the first and probably the most critical one, given our schedule coming up, is how does the budget process work? We came up with a template, I don't have it here, but somewhere in my bag, it's a template, just a two-page template, and it would always be the same for whatever the topic is. And it would include basic information along with links to other resources. It could be to policies, to the website. And it would have a standard format where there would be a summary on the left-hand side. This is something we'd like to move forward with and have a draft available for us to look at when we come back. And once that's done, we have a whole list of other things that we'd be interested in providing. For example, you know, how the school board works, or the, and help me with ideas that I'm not remembering off the top of my head. If, so you're interested in being a school board member, what do you need to know?
That's a great idea.
What are, you know, what to expect when you're making public comment, what's the deliberative session? So there's all sorts of topics we can hit on, but we want to focus on the budget first. And we essentially have a library on the website, so people could find that information. So anyways, that's what we do.
That sounds wonderful. I like that. And you don't meet again until the fall?
Yeah, we'll be meeting in the first meeting in September, which I believe is September 8th.
Okay.
Go back, whatever that first September meeting is.
Right.
So we won't meet in August.
Okay, sounds good. All right, policy review, Shane?
All right, policy has not met, we won't meet again until the fall, but we do have a couple of policies that are up for Q and A tonight, and we do have some policies that are up for adoption tonight.
Awesome, thank you, Shane, and we don't meet again?
Not until the fall.
Perfect. All right, the SAU Joint Area Committee meeting, so this is just a couple of separate members of the board are meeting Wednesday, June 11th at 6:00 PM. That's next Wednesday.
And just to note, this is a meeting at New Boston Central School.
Yeah.
I wanted to explain why the New Boston Board is doing their retreat that evening, so we're going to have the joint area meeting for an hour, up to an hour before. Otherwise, it could have been here, but we didn't want the whole board traveling.
Makes it easier for them.
Yep, made it easier for them.
So if you don't remember what committee you're on, look on your sheet or contact one of us. So that's June 11th, and then the SAU board meeting in October, that'll be determined later, when we come back again in October, September, August, or whatever.
Yep.
All right, superintendent's report?
Thank you, so just.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Jack.
CIP.
Oh, CIP!
We met.
Sorry about that, Jack.
Administrator talk, we, I posed the question of removing the reoccurring IT stuff from the matrix, because that's what Scott felt he was directed to do. The, Tim didn't believe that came from the CIP. So.
Well, we just want clarification, you know.
I was trying to get it, so I thought I'd come back and ask Scott or Doug.
All right, well, we would just let the board know that we purposely removed all the IT items because we thought that was the direction of the committee.
Scott had it on a special.
Yeah, we did it as a whole separate sheet.
Right, because when I was there, when Randy and I were in attendance last June, they had directed us anything was a recurring charge, or at that point, anything that was under $50,000, they wanted removed from the matrix.
So if it was from that meeting, that was my feeling.
Yeah, it was from the meeting last June, when we attended to present the.
I remember, like you, yes, okay.
The CIP.
So Jack, I think if you could just share that we're happy to provide whatever information they want, we have it all.
Yep, absolutely. Okay, that's all.
And when's the next meeting?
We meet again, now that's a lot of pressure.
Oh, sorry.
Soon, though, yeah, very soon, soon, yeah.
Yeah, I put it in the, I put it in the calendar, because I'm getting smiler, because I can't remember anything. I didn't call it.
That's okay, I'm sure it's on the town website if folks are interested.
All right, awesome. Thank you, Jack. All right, superintendent's report?
Thank you, just a few updates for the board this evening. Wanted to let you know we received updates from the town, and our impact fees for the Goffstown School District are up to $390,000, so that's a good thing. We've seen a big chunk as an increase as a outcome of some of these new developments, but we're up to $390,000 for impact fees. We received notification from Mr. Wilhelmie, our Parks and Rec director, that there are concerns at Barnard Park with respect to the track. He has a company coming in, I guess the track, we knew that the track was kind of reaching towards its end of life, that it was going to need some attention, and I guess it's gotten there a little faster than they hoped. So more to come on that, I would anticipate that we'll be asked to pay into that track. We paid the last time the surfacing was done, that was more than 10 years ago, but I wanted you to know that. I have bad news and good news on the generator front. So let me start with the bad news. The bad news is the old, original Mountain View generator is having a new issue. It is right now offline, and Mr. Loring is hoping he can have it repaired or portions of it replaced. The best outcome appears to be some kind of a full head gasket repair, and the worst outcome is worse than that. So it's not great, but I do have a little bit of, a little bit of hope, a little bit of good news. We received notification from Chief Murray, the fire chief, that our FEMA grant project that we submitted, there was a team of eight people from FEMA today who were here at Goffstown High School taking pictures as they continue to evaluate this project. So I had been told that the FEMA money was going to be cut, it was off the table, but they were here today. So I'm trying really hard not to get my hopes up too much, only to be let down at a later point, but the fact that they had eight of them, that's not an insignificant number of FEMA-type people to show up and do this, so.
Was that the fire department that was?
The fire department was a part of it, yep.
Okay, because I walked out the front door, and there were a lot of fire trucks.
Well, when FEMA comes, you gotta.
What is going on?
Yes. They try, yeah, that's how they like it, I guess, I don't know. But so those are ongoing, so maybe with a little bit of luck, the generator project here might have a little bit of life still in it. And my last piece, I've had questions from board members about the high school front parking lot. There have been questions and concerns about safety. I've got pricing to do a full redo of the front parking lot that is under $20,000, so unless the board objects, I'm going to plan on just doing this. What this is going to include, this is going to be a big deal to staff and for students. It would be a complete blackout and resealing of the entire parking lot, and then we would do angled spaces the entire front, so that when the spaces are angled, you can't possibly back out and go the wrong way. It would be new signage directing that it's one-way. So this is, Mr. Gross is not here this evening, but I believe we have this money. We're not looking for funds that we don't have to be able to cover this. Less than 20 grand, I'm planning to just do this unless the board objects.
Any questions, comments?
Will we lose spaces, save them out?
He thinks we're going to lose one on each side. So by doing the angle, I think it could be more than one, but Randy thinks it's only one space that we'll lose because of the angle for each side.
Yeah.
So I, I don't know, I didn't want to question the math, but.
Go ahead, Rheta.
I think a couple of questions. One, I don't know anything about parking science or safety. Is there any concern about moving to an angle? Is this better for accidents, or does anybody know about that?
So we have not engaged, I can certainly have a meeting with the chief this week, I can speak to the chief about it. We didn't look into, you know, the Highway Safety Committee doing an analysis or anything of that nature. Mr. Loring, who has done a lot of these, feels very strongly that the angled spaces solves the problem.
And if I can just do one quick follow-up.
Yeah, go ahead.
So the, and then the other question, I know there's a lot of spaces reserved for, you know, students, 15 minutes, what, or not students, but for visitors. At an angle, that's going to be a little more difficult to see. I, I'm just assuming, so, you know, I don't know if there's any sort of, you know, would there be painting at the end so people know?
I think it's going to be a change for people, for sure, and I think that we'll have to see, you know, can we do some extra painting, you know, or something to make sure that it's clear to people?
Right.
I think we'll have to see once it's all done. But I think it's going to be much safer.
Yeah, thank you.
Gotcha.
Just adding on to Rheta's, you know, ADA, you know, for disabilities, making sure that there's the ability, even maybe more parking spaces for some of those things. I don't know how that would factor into the angle plan, I just want to make sure that's something that is considered, and I'm sure is.
Yeah, for sure.
We have a lot of.
Go ahead, Jenny.
Would improved signage at the beginning?
Both.
Help?
Both ends.
Yeah.
Like one-way, do not enter?
Because the signs right now were not particularly bold, yeah.
Yep, that's the plan.
Okay.
And the good news is it will, in order, you have to black everything out in order to restripe it, so that would be like a double seal. So it's good for the parking lot, it'll be a good refresh of it, and then the paint will really pop, all the angled spaces. And my goal would be to have it done, signage in place, all ready to go for next school year.
And this is just the front?
Just the front.
Because the back has already been done?
Yep, not going to do anything to the back. I mean, at some point, the longer-term vision, I'd love to have more parking here at Goffstown High School, but that's another conversation for another day.
Go ahead, Jack.
Have more parking in Goffstown in general.
I agree.
All right, so is everybody good with this? Anybody have any?
Yeah, I think it's time.
Oh, yeah, there's a lot of people going the wrong way, somebody's going to get hit.
Yep, agree.
June 5th was the CIP meeting, I told you I couldn't remember.
It's Thursday night. June 5th, okay.
Thank you, Jack.
That's this week.
That's this week.
That's like three days now.
Put it in the phone with an alert.
That was all I had, and I'd be happy to answer any questions, Mrs. Cole or Mr. Totten, Mr. Borget, because he's here.
And of course Steve. Anyone? All right. Oh, sorry, Jack, go ahead.
I just know at our last board meeting, we did talk about the baseball fields. Has there been any public statements that you can make about that?
No, so we're going to talk about the baseball field at the board retreat, but as Ginny mentioned, you know, this is a real issue and problem for Goffstown with no great answers. And a baseball field is way more expensive than you might think. So no, no new updates on that. We've got some options that we're going to present to the board for consideration at the retreat. And for this topic, Mr. Cowett, our athletic director, will be joining us.
Sounds good.
Yep.
All right, everybody else good? All right, so speaking of retreat, so we could not go to C and E's this year.
Oh, right.
Were you supposed to talk about that?
No, but I certainly could have.
So we made the decision to do it at the SAU, the other option was to no, and I thought that was a little out of the way for everybody, so we're going to go to the SAU upstairs, 3 o'clock on June 16th. So that'll still, and it's just retreat, right?
Yep. Yep, it is.
Hopefully, we're not there seven hours. We've been in the past. All right, so let Denise know, or me know, if you're not able to make it. And then, is that it for the retreat?
Yep.
All right, so old business, Shane?
All right, so we have the, I guess, it's really four policies, but three of them are the same exact language that are up for Q and A tonight, so if anyone has any questions about A, B, C, G, D, E, D, or J, I, C, G. Again, remember that those are pretty much all the same, well, actually exactly all the same language. They just apply to different groups of people, so. I don't know if anyone had any questions about those three policies.
Anybody?
Now, which packet is this?
It's one of the Q and A policies, it's got the cover, kind of the cover letter.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, cover page, I should say.
Anybody have any questions, Shane?
Again, the J I C D is a reference to the tobacco and nicotine product ban. And again, just three iterations of it, with the same language, that just apply to different groups of people. people.
All right, I guess you can move on to.
Those will come back to us.
Yes, all right. Go ahead, sorry.
Next one's IC, which is kind of like a consolidation, going to combine ICA and ID all into IC. So you actually have copies of IC and ID and ICA, the old copies, and then you have the new copy, which is kind of a consolidation of the three policies in two one. If anyone has any questions about that policy.
Otherwise, it will come back.
All right, sounds good.
Great, thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Shane. All right, new business. We need to authorize to conduct business during the summer months, which is policy BFD. So that's number seven on our list of motions. Anybody?
Yeah, I'm not going to read motions that have been printed out.
That's fine, go ahead.
Reaffirm to execute policy BFD for the authorization during the summer months.
All right, thank you, Jared. Do I have a second?
One second.
By Shane. Any further discussion? CNN, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Teachers, students, opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. All right, so the report cards, what were, what is that?
That's over a minute, that's okay.
Oh, yes, go for it, Wendy.
So at our last meeting, I gave everyone a blue folder that had information in it for this evening. So if you happen to have that, if you wouldn't mind taking out, I did make three extra copies and brought them with me this evening. So if anybody did forget theirs, I'm happy to have those. Mrs. Bean and Mr. Davis also have copies of the presentation there. So if you do need some, if you don't have it with you, I did bring some extras this evening. So in those folders, just for the board to know, in there is the PowerPoint that I'm going to show you tonight, and it's very brief compared to what was done over at SNE. This was already presented last month to SNE and approved to be able to bring to the full board for consideration. There's also information for the parent survey that we did to get feedback on our current standards, as well as the standards that we're suggesting to make some edits to for approval, and a sample of the Maple Avenue and Mountain View report card. The reason why that's there is last year, when I brought this to you for pilot, you had it on a spreadsheet, but you didn't actually see what the report card looked like. So I just wanted you to have a visual of what that is, okay? So jumping into it, just to give a little bit of a brief overview of our steps in the process, and I apologize, this is a bit repetitive for the board, but for parents at home, I wanted to make sure that they knew. Back in 2023, we established a standards-based report card professional learning community. We looked at reference materials, we got samples from other school districts, and we went over to our good friends in New Boston and had a presentation on what they did for their standards-based report card and got information from them. From there, we started our own PLC work here in district to develop our standards. And then last spring, I brought to you a pilot that we've been doing this year. From there, we received feedback from parents at parent conferences and through the use of the survey that you have in your folder. And then we also got information from our teachers, from our administrators, to bring to you the final draft of our pilot that we're asking to be approved this evening. It did go to SNE, and we're looking, like I said, tonight for approval from the school board, and with a further recommendation that we bring this back to SNE every four to five years to look at our standards and to see if there are any changes that need to be made. Obviously, if there's any changes in state law or in standards, like if we actually get new social studies standards, as an example, passed by the state, we would bring them back sooner. But if you remember, when I presented last spring, our elementary report card had not been changed in 20 years, which is way too long to not be looked at. So moving forward, we'd like, we'd like to look at it every four to five years. So just as a reminder of what standards-based grading is, is it focuses on student mastery of specific learning standards. It separates academics from habits of work and behavior, so they're not all in one grade. It provides consistent and clear information to our families. And if you also remember, this was part of our neasc accreditation process at Mountain View. It was a recommendation for us to add standards-based grading. At that time, and continuing moving forward, we're only looking to do standards-based grading at the fifth and sixth grade level, not at the seventh and eighth grade level, to help our students transition to the high school, knowing that besides just that transition to grades, traditional grades, we also have some courses that we offer, algebra and geometry, which are credit-bearing at Mountain View. And moving to standards wouldn't work for kids to be able to get that credit, and we want them to be able to do that. As I mentioned, our first through fourth grade report card had not been updated in over 20 years. So I'd already mentioned to you that we collected parent feedback. It's also important to mention that our grade-level teachers from Bartlett and Maple Avenue did this work together. So a lot of collaboration between those buildings to make sure that we are on the same page. And then obviously, we're bringing those proposed changes to you this evening. If we do get approval from you this evening, we talked a lot as an administrative team, and with some of our teacher leaders, about the importance of getting information out at open houses. That was through feedback that we got from parents, is more information about, about standards-based report card, how to read things in Power Teacher Pro, which we're going to talk about in a second. So making sure that we're getting that out there. The other piece that we want to make sure that we're doing is some sort of video that we can send out to families after open house, knowing that not all of our families are able to get there, but we want this information to be out readily available for our parents. Next year, we would like for all of our first through sixth grade teachers to use Power Teacher Pro. Right now, only our fifth and sixth grade teachers are using it. So when parents go into Power Teacher Pro, they're actually able to see the written standard and then the assignments that are associated with that standard, so they're getting constant feedback. During this third trimester, our fourth grade teachers at both Bartlett and Maple Avenue piloted doing standards-based report cards on Power Teacher Pro. They loved it, rave reviews, and parents were able to see things throughout the trimester. So with this approval, we are looking to roll this out all the way down to first grade. So again, more transparent, more communication with parents, because they're able to see the standards that we're working on right in Power Teacher Pro. We also will continue to use report card comments. So I know, you know, being a parent, the one thing that I go and look for right away is what are the comments that are made on that report card? And there's a pretty significant section where teachers are able to write narratives to give parents more information rather than just kind of those grades on the standards. So we'll continue to make sure that we're using that and utilizing that for parents to get a really good picture that's specific to their child. So I do have, just for, for parents at home, and I know you have this, it's hard to see in here, but what Power Teacher Pro looks like. So when families go into Power Teacher Pro, like I had mentioned, they're able to see the wording that goes with the standard, and if you look all the way to the right, the grade, the two that goes with that. Under the view column, I'm going to go over here a little bit, there are spots where teachers can actually make comments right in teacher, right in Power Teacher Pro. So beyond seeing the score of a one, two, three, or four, parents can actually click on view. And teachers, if they want to get something out to parents, they can actually write a message right to parents on there that has to do with that grade. Maybe it was, the student was offered a quiet space to work and decided not to use it. That's important information for parents to have. So there's some great opportunity, again, for more communication and more transparency with our families. So as you're looking at the standards that are in your packet, you're going to notice that there are very few requests for changes from our pilot for our first through fourth grade teachers. With fifth and sixth grade, we did make some additions. There are very few deleted standards that we did this year. A lot of those were combined into other standards, and then we updated a lot of verbiage based on New Hampshire State standards. So we wanted to make sure that our verbiage was really clear. However, also understanding that we want our parents to understand what those standards are. So this evening, I am looking for approval for our standards-based grading to go into effect for next year. If there are any questions.
Thank you, Wendy. Go ahead, Ginny.
SNE did vote to bring this recommendation forward to the board as well.
Thank you, Ginny. Anyone else? Questions, comments? Anybody want to make a motion if you're good with it?
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, Ginny.
To bring forth the pilot and bring it into effect for the new standardized report cards for grades one through, K through six.
They're K through six, but there are no changes to K, and they weren't for the pilot either, but you're welcome to put K in there.
All right. Thank you, Ginny. Do I have a second? By Caroline? Any further discussion?
I just had a quick question.
Yeah, go ahead, Laura.
How parents access that Pro?
Power Teacher Pro.
Power Teacher Pro, the screen that you showed, how would they find that?
So that is just logging into Power School. So when you're going into Power School, so think beginning of the year, when you're doing all of your health forms and everything else in Power School, right now, for our first through fourth grade parents, you really don't go in there very often, because you only go in pretty much for forms, and that's going to change drastically. Parents will be able to go in and see the standards and see the grades right there associated with it, so we're pretty excited about it. So like I said, communication at open house, making sure we're getting information out to parents is going to be really important this year, especially for the elementary group.
And five and six could do that now?
Yes, five and six can do that now. Yeah.
Thanks, Laura. Any other questions or comments? All right, CNN, we have a motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Teachers, students, opposed, abstaining. All right, we're unanimous.
Heather, if I could also just thank all of our teachers for their hard work. They've been working on this for more than two years. They've put a lot of work into this. The work they've done is tremendous. So just thank you to all of them for getting this through.
Definitely, thank you.
And to you, Wendy.
Yes, and to you. All right, Shane, you're up again, second reads.
All right, so we have these policies that are up for adoption this evening. I don't know if anyone has any feedback. Otherwise, we can take motions to adopt these policies.
So we'll start with ACR.
First one would be ACR.
Anybody have a motion?
Motion to approve policy ACR two as presented.
Thank you, Caroline. Do I have a second?
Second.
Bye, Ginny. Any discussion? CNN, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Teachers, students, opposed, abstaining, or yes. Go ahead, Shane.
All right, the next one we have is policy CBI, which is the evaluation of the superintendent. And you'll remember that the main change here is the change of the date when this evaluation is due.
I have a motion. Go ahead, Reta.
Yeah, I have the same question I had before when this was brought forward, in where does the evaluation take place? When does it take place in comparison to when we are considering additional pay for the superintendent? And this seems like it's moving it even later. So I, I just, I, we're making decisions about, you know, what they're being paid, and then we're doing the evaluation, and that just seems like it's backwards. The other thing is that it also brings any, any new school board members that are being voted in in March, they're not going to know that much about the superintendent. So I still, I'm not in favor of the timing of this. In, in general, you know, the policy's good, but I just think the timing is off and doesn't make sense to me. And as I said before, this is nothing about Brian. I think, you know, in general, policies are like, yeah, yeah, yeah. But I think if we're ever in a situation where there is a problem, then it's, it's a little bit awkward.
Yeah. And I don't remember why exactly we came to those dates. I know we wanted to move it further back. But, yeah, you know, it's a valid point. We do talk about the compensation in.
April, right?
Yeah. I don't know if anyone has suggestions on more amenable dates or?
I have a general question.
Go ahead, Jared.
Doesn't this fall in line with the SAU policy?
Yeah, and New Boston.
New Boston is also adopting with these same dates.
Yeah, everybody is changing their dates.
So I mean, I don't know if it's appropriate that, of course, we can say no as a Goffstown School District, but it's consistent with what the SAU policy is, and I don't know if it's going to be changed at a next board meeting.
Yeah, because.
I think it already has been changed at the SAU. I'm not sure of that.
I don't remember, yeah.
I don't know, we've talked about it.
Yeah.
I know it's changing in New Boston.
But New Boston and Goffstown do need to align with the SAU because of the fact that New Boston does theirs, Goffstown does theirs, it all goes to the SAU chair, and then the SAU chair does, which is you now.
That's right.
So.
Yeah, I mean, I'm open to different dates. It came, this came about because it, it was right after budget.
Yeah.
And then.
And delivery date.
And we were, everybody was struggling to get it done, and the superintendent, and because he has to do his, I mean, there seemed to be a lot of things that the private, previous dates were not working for board members and the superintendent. So that's why we changed it, and we've gone back and forth with a couple of different dates. It, it, there's really not a perfect time to do this.
I, I hear what you're saying, Reta. I might recommend going with these dates and then evaluating whether they work or not.
Because we don't want to do it in the beginning of the year.
Well, and realistically, this won't be something that you would deal with for a number of years anyhow, so I don't think it's going to be a problem.
Yeah, we can always see how it goes and then, you know, we can always look at it again and say, you know, what is too, I mean, I don't know, and we went back and forth with dates.
Yeah, because.
Well, I think it was too early.
You knew it too early, yeah, right.
Yeah, it's, it's hard to find a proper time.
Yeah.
But I think that this is better than it currently is. So I might recommend going with this, and if you decide a year into this that it's, it's too late, then you can move in and make it earlier.
All right, so.
Motion to approve CBI as presented.
All right. I have a motion by Caroline. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Shane. All right, any further discussion? CNN, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Teachers, students, opposed, one, and abstaining. Okay, so we have one, no, which is Reta. Teacher said yes, student said yes. All right.
All right. Next one is policy EHBR, which is the local records retention schedule. So again, this is where we keep all of the documents, how long we need to keep them, and all that fun stuff. So it wasn't really a lot to update on this one.
So I'll need a motion. So, go ahead, Jack.
Make a motion that we accept. Policy EHBR has presented.
Thank you, Jack. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Ginny. Need further discussion? CNN, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Teachers, students, opposed, abstaining. Okay, we're unanimous. Go ahead.
The next two kind of go together. GBAA was sexual harassment and violence policy for employees. JVAA was a sexual harassment and violence policy for students. We are actually recommending deleting both these policies because they are going to be in ACAC. So we're actually looking for a deletion of these two policies as they are going to be incorporated to ACAC.
All right, so we'll need a motion to delete the policies.
Motion to delete.
Go ahead.
GBAA and JVAA.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
Ginny, did you have a question?
Nope.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I, I just have a quick question. So we're deleting these, and what, is there a policy in place?
ACAC.
That was a huge policy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, as long as we've got something.
Yeah, that's the one that changed based on the.
Yeah.
All right, so I have a motion, I have a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Teachers, students, opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. All right.
All right, the second to last one is JJIC, which is the eligibility for interdisciplinary athletics. And this was a policy that required that we basically took the New York School Association language and basically incorporated that into our policy.
All right, go ahead, Jared.
Just a general question, friendly amendment. Under B subsection two, parental consent form, should that be a guardian consent form versus parental consent form? Just, I don't know.
Probably more accurate, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if that poses problems.
So I mean, we can amend it or not. The definition of parent, we would always default to the definition, which would include guardian, but as a practice, I think it's good to say guardian because we, that's how we should say it.
So we just cross that parental and guardian?
Yeah, or parental slash guardian. Are you good with that, Jared?
Yeah, I didn't know if we had something specific called parental consent form and other things that we now need to change if we did that.
Yeah, guardian's more accurate.
Guardian's more accurate, yeah.
Anything else?
So we could adopt that one as amended.
Yeah. I'll make the motion to adopt JJIC as amended with guardian consent form.
Perfect, thank you, Jared. Do I have a second? By Laura. Sorry, Jared.
Sorry.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Teachers, students, opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. All right, last one.
The last one's KI, which is visitors to the school. You'll see there's a couple of things crossed out, pupils replaced with students, and secretary replaced with administrative assistants, and then there was a line at the end of the first paragraph, I should say, kind of detailing the process. If someone visiting the school does not have valid identification, they can still come into the school with the proper protocols.
All right, go ahead, Jared.
So I think I asked this before, and I'll ask it again. So I know that Ginny did a great job presenting this as part of the student handbook, and I thought the reason to put it in the student handbook is so that we wouldn't need the policy anymore.
No.
So we're going to have them in both places?
Yeah.
Because I thought we were trying to take things out of the handbook if we do have a policy, because of trying to have duplicate verbiage in place.
Talking about the visitor management system that we use. So we included that language in the student handbooks.
We did put that language in there because at the time, the policy had not been updated. So Jared's right. What we've been doing is, once we've been updating our policies, we've been putting references to policies in there. Jared's right, but when we made the amendments, this policy had not been looked at yet.
So I know that we've already printed or went to print for those.
Yeah, they were already going to print.
So next cycle, we're going to probably remove that duplicate language in the handbook and reference the policy.
We'll probably, well, we'll certainly reference the policy in the handbook, absolutely.
Yeah, you good with that?
I'm good, just again, just calling out because I thought we were trying to, as a practice, remove.
If we can, yeah.
Okay.
Jared's right. We used to have full policies in the handbook.
Which we've been removing.
We've been removing them, but we've been referencing them instead.
But this wasn't updated when we did the handbook. So next cycle, it'll be taken out with the reference.
Yeah.
All right, we're good?
I'm good.
All right, so I'll need a motion.
I have a motion to approve policy KI.
Thank you, Laura. Do I have a second?
Second.
Karen. Who's raising their hand first? All right, so I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? All right, CNE, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Teachers, students, opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous.
Just Karen.
Yes.
Just before we move off of this particular, I know Ginny was going to ask this question, but I think that with my changes, I made a change, I forget. With the adoption of JJIC, how does this relate to students that are homeschooled within our district? Because it doesn't mention them in JJIC.
They're covered under, they're eligible to participate under another policy.
Okay. And because we actually have eligibility requirements in JJIC for Goffstown students, is that information also covered in that other policy?
Yeah. And in fact, the NHI double A has very extensive rules about who can play and where, so yes, that's all taken care of.
Great, thank you.
All right, everybody good? Moving on to staffing.
Okay, staffing, a few track changes for your notification only. Congratulations to Jess Roy, Emily D'Agostino, and Sylvia Lewis. For your approval this evening, we have two resignations. I'll just do these in batches. So we're wishing the two resignations well.
And the other one? Oh, that's next, that's the end of July, okay. Because I have three.
Right.
So the first two resignations, I'll need a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the two teacher resignations as presented.
All right, thank you, Shane. Do I have a second?
A second.
By Caroline. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Teachers, students, opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Okay?
Teacher resignation at the end of July, believe that individual's teaching summer program for us.
Yes.
Okay, now I'll need a motion.
I'll motion to approve the teacher resignation at the end of July.
Thank you, Rheta. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Caroline. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Teachers, students, opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Okay?
Okay, the next batch is a whole batch of teacher nominations. So as you can see, the principals and the other administrators have been busy hiring. They've done a great job. You can see we've got math teachers in there, we've got science, special ed, speech. So the administrators have done a great job. Mrs. Kohler's been processing all of those nominations, so we're thrilled to welcome these people to our team.
Awesome. So I'll need a motion for the teacher nominations?
I'll make a motion to approve the teacher nominations for your school year 25, 26 as presented.
Thank you, Shane. Do I have a second? By Ginny. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Teachers, students, opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. Go ahead.
So the next batch, these are all of our technology nominations. The board will recall that at your last meeting, we discussed salary and compensations for all these individuals, but it was late at night and we forgot to make the motion afterwards to approve the nominations. Mrs. Moran may have been whispering that in my ear.
Yes.
She was right.
Well, you and I misunderstood her.
So we need to do the technology nominations. These are all within the parameters discussed with the board in non-public, and this includes the new position of a new help desk position. You'll see down at the very bottom, that was part of that package, and Mr. Borget already found a great candidate for that. So we're really excited to welcome that person, so we would ask for your approval for the technology nominations, as well as the new technology help desk position nomination.
All right.
So moved.
All right, so Rheta, do I have a second? Caroline? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Teachers, students, opposed, and abstaining. And we are unanimous. So that's it for staffing.
That's it, thank you.
Top three things.
So we ended up with, I apologize, we ended up with one other other, which I didn't realize needed approval today, so.
Okay.
Thank you. So it's in regards yearly approval, so you recognize that it's in regards to commodity pricing for copy paper. So this is something that Scott asks for every year to kind of waive the sealed bid process for the Goffstown School District for the policy DJB, and allow to negotiate to cure the best price for commodity pricing for copy paper with the current vendor WB Mason or other vendors.
All right. So that's Jared made the motion.
I have a second.
And then Jack, second. All right, any further discussion? Did you get all that, Denise? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Teachers, students, opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous.
Take a start.
Thank you, Dennis. Thank you, Denise. All right, top three things.
So I'm just going to list some that jumped out at me, but feel free to add your own. I've got the invirathon, the sudden cardiac arrest program, who we played for, as well as the funding of the softball field scoreboard replacement.
Yeah. I'm good.
I know what I had.
Did you have that?
Number one.
I said better than what I had.
Invirathon.
Okay, good.
Nobody's excited about the policies? Is it just me?
Steven is.
My number three was the data governance changes. See? Steven likes it.
I did put the MVMS book.
Oh, yeah. That is really cool.
Yeah, that was a beautiful book.
Yeah, it came out really good.
That came out really nice. Okay.
What do you want to do? We've got four things.
Let's spring and do four this time.
No. We're on the graphic.
Only three.
Let's do the book now, and let's do the sign when it's in.
Okay.